And swing the little mini gavel there and get this one started. Madam Clerk, if you would please begin with the roll call.
Mayor Gayler.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Matthews.
Present.
Councilwoman Jones.
Present.
Councilman Boyet.
Present.
Councilwoman Taylor.
Present.
Councilwoman Weeks.
Present.
Councilwoman White.
Present. All right, all present accounted for, but I hope everybody's week is off to a good start. All right, we'll go directly into an adoption of the agenda. Madam Clerk, Mr. Livingston, I'm not aware of any changes to bring forward to the council. Counselor, any changes that you would bring forward to the agenda? Hearing non will accept the motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
Second.
All right, motions have been made and properly seconded to approve the agenda or adopt the agenda as presented. All in favor, please raise your hands. All opposed, same sign. Seeing none, motion passes. All right, we'll be straightening old business, item 3A. Mr. Livingston, if you please get us started.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We have Chad Cook online to give the audit presentation. As most of you know, the audit's been turned over to the LGC. They're in the process of reviewing it and Chad is going to do his audit presentation and give us the results of the audit. Chad, you're good to go.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, well, yes, greetings again to the mayor and the city council. I want to say thank you for having me back to present the final results of the fiscal 20th floor audit. At the work session on November 4th, our report will be completing the financial statements submission to the LGC the following day, November 5th. We did submit the financial statements to the LGC on November 5th, and those statements are still currently under review with the LGC. Catherine was told that the review may not occur until the end of November due to the volume of reports that they received this time of year. So the decision was made to just go ahead and post the financial statements on the city's website for the public last week. Should there be any requested changes from the LGC's review, we will certainly put out word. However, that's not been the case for the last several years and we don't anticipate any required changes to the financial statements as currently presented. Tonight, I have just a few slides that summarize some high-level financial results as of June 30th, 2024, and over the last five years, with some graphical depictions of those results so that you can see the trends in like revenues and expenditures, fund balance, et cetera. Before we jump into those slides, I do want to confirm one item that was discussed at the work session on November 4th. You all may recall, I mentioned that should the city have any financial performance indicators of concern, once we completed this year's data input workbook, which is a file that we fill out that contains current year financial information at the completion of the audit, that I would be required to communicate those to you all similar to last year. I also reported that there was only one item that I was anticipating at that time at the work session on November 4th, related to the aging of the water and sewer infrastructure. That did turn out to be the case. We did get rid of all the other FPICs from fiscal 2023. The only one that remained in fiscal 24 was again, because the utility funds property, plant, and equipment is more than 50% depreciated, that's an automatic financial performance indicator of concern as far as the LGC is concerned. And you all are going to be required to provide a response to the LGC regarding that matter within 60 days from today, which is the official date of my report of that financial performance indicator to the council. Again, you all, you just provided a response to this item following the fiscal 2023 audit earlier this year, probably in July, I believe. So I would imagine that the response will be consistent with that that was previously provided. And just as a reminder, that response does require the signature of the majority of the members of the city council. So I'm sure Matt and Catherine will be coordinating that response, but again, you'll have 60 days from today, the date of my presentation, to provide that response to the LGC. Within tonight's agenda package, you should have seen, it was a PowerPoint or PDF that had the reports of the city council of financial results following fiscal 2020, fiscal year 2024 audit. I don't see the share feature within Zoom, so I can't exactly see what you all can see there in person. But I would just like to start, if someone has access to that. We'll start on the second page, so we've got a cover page on the second page of that report. Again, we've just got audit matters, which mentions we completed the audit as of June 30th, 2024.
Hey Chad, give us just one second, we're going to see if we can get, get out of here back in the room.
Do see the share feature, hold on.
If you're able to go.
Can you all see that now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great.
And if you would, please, just zoom in as much as you can reasonably. I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, so again, we completed the audit as of June 30th, 24. And as far as services performed this year, it was an audit of the 2024 basic financial statements. And then also, we completed a compliance audit in accordance with the state single law implementation act. So we had a major state program this year, which was the Powell bill program, but did not have any major federal programs due to the level of expenditures of federal funds being below $750,000 for fiscal 2024. Moving down to the next, the next slide, we've got the general fund, and this is just a fund balance summary. You'll kind of see from 2020 through 2024. You see, the total, total fund balance for the general fund is up to 28.4 million. Of that, there's a non-spendable fund balance of 868,000 and restricted fund balance of 6.9. So that leaves you with about 20.6 available for appropriation in fiscal 2025. And then down there at the bottom, you'll see the total expenditures and routine transfers just as a percentage of, or excuse me, available fund balance as a percentage of expenditures and routine transfers. And you'll see that, you know, back in 2020, that's when we got pretty dangerously low, down at 8.3%. 2021 came back a bit, and then a nice increase in 2022. And it's continued to improve into 2023. 2024 dipped lightly, but still a very strong, strong number, 46.9%. The next slide is really just sort of a graphical depiction of that. So up top, you'll see this is the total expenditures and routine transfers. So expenditures did come down a bit. It's, it's a little difficult to compare some of these years because there was some ARPA funding, and as a result of the ARPA funding, there were some expenditures from the general fund that moved to a special revenue fund for a couple of years related to payroll in 2022 and 23. So if you kind of cut that out and just look, maybe draw more of a straight line from 2021 through 2024, you see this, there has been an increase in overall expenditures in the general fund. But as far as the fund balance available for appropriation, I think the increase there is kind of outpacing the increase in the expenditures. Moving down to the next page, we've got a utility fund summary. And here, we're showing revenues on the budgetary basis versus expenditures on the budgetary basis, and then also the working capital for the utility fund. You'll see again, revenues on the budgetary basis are up to 24.5 million for fiscal 24 versus the expenditures of 17.5. And the utility fund does have a working capital of 31.6 million as of June 30th, 2024. And again, we've got just a graphical depiction kind of of those figures. So you see here in blue, this is the revenues on the budgetary basis, which were fairly flat from 21 to 22, but it upticked the last couple of years. I know that there has been some, you know, changes in rates that have led to that, but also changes in usage. The expenditures on the budgetary basis have come down. I think similar to the general fund explanation, there was a dip in 22 and 23 that was largely related to ARPA revenues that were, excuse me, ARPA funds, which allowed some of these expenditures to be transferred out to a special revenue fund. But still, overall, I believe the 24 expenditures are actually below 2020. So there has been a decline in expenditures within the fund and an increase in revenues. And so you see a resulting increase in the working capital within the utility fund that's continued to climb into 2024. So again, over 32 million in 63024. And then the financial performance indicator of concern, I've already mentioned that, so we'll skip over that. But I will just point out, I mentioned 60 days. It will be due based on today's presentation date, January 17th, 2025. And we do have a link to the portal where that, that response will be required. That's really all that I had planned for the presentation tonight. I know that, again, we just met a couple of weeks ago, and I certainly appreciate the flexibility that Matt and Catherine and the team offered to allow me to join tonight in Zoom, or excuse me, via Zoom as opposed to in person. But, you know, a lot of what I reported at the last meeting, it held true. I think that, you know, all the figures we reported, there were no changes between the date of that presentation and the final submission of the financial statements. But certainly, if you all have had a chance to review that final report, anyone has any questions related to the financials on the Art for 2024, I would be happy to answer those questions now.
All right, counsel, are any questions for, for Mr. Cook, or for Mr. Livingston, or for Ms. Gwen? I'll just go ahead and say that this is really good to be back in a position where that we have a fund balance that is healthy. We are submitting our audits back on time. We're in good standing on all of our debts. You know, now all of a sudden, we're in a position where that our neighbors are coming to us and saying, can you help us get stabilized due to water bills and due to, to storm bills? And so I appreciate the work that's gone into this. Ms. Gwen, you, your office, your staff, I realize the volume of hours over the last, you know, couple of years at a minimum. And I do want to publicly thank each and every one of you, of you and them, for all of the work to get us to where that we are, and counsel for being bold enough to make strong but very difficult political decisions over the last couple of years to be able to adjust rates and adjust internal spending and adjust allotments for ARPA funding to be able to get us in this position. So these things don't happen overnight, they happen because of, you know, adjustments in culture, and I feel like we're in a much better spot. Mr. Livingston, Ms. Gwen, if either of you'd like a microphone to say anything else, great. If not, that's it for me. All right. Well, with that, Chad, thank you. Have a wonderful rest of your night, and we'll talk to you, talk to you soon, I'm sure.
Thank you.
All right, counsel, and that is really good news. Next, we'll move to item 3B, and I'll be leading this discussion. This is a, item 3B is Friends of Seymour agreement discussion. This is following on the conversation from our last meeting. It'll remain on old business until it's time for somebody to actually present it for vote. Ms. Gutz, did the most recent version of it get printed out onto the folders?
Yes, sir.
They did, perfect.
It's in their folder.
Perfect, I don't have it in my notebook, but this is not presented for vote tonight. The purpose of this is making sure that it's in front of everybody to be able to see. Here's some of, some of the conversations that are going back and forth. The organization is really committed to trying to focus on what it was originally founded for, which are building those relationships with the families that are right here in Goldsboro, as well as our stakeholders up in, up in DC. So, oh, thank you, it's good. I'm not actually going to ask counsel for any, any specific feedback, other than just to put it in front of everybody and say, this is something that I think that is important. I think that when you look at the sort of financial core of the things that we do, I think that Seymour Johnson is a critical component of that. When you look at the amount of money that flows through Seymour Johnson, you know, this, this even, even coupled with the amount of money that's spent on the lobbyist at consulting firm, I think is, is not out of line with what you would see other host cities spending. But I want to open it up for counsel if you have any comments or questions on this. This is not final by any means, this has not been reviewed by the Friends of Seymour board. This is, the amount is still less than the 2014 agreement, but it is higher than what I brought to you last time. Again, this is not final. We can continue to negotiate this, but I wanted you to at least have an opportunity to review it. I'm not asking necessarily for feedback right now, but between now and next meeting, please do if you don't have any comments right now.
I, I got, I got a couple of comments.
Yes, counsel, please.
So who we negotiating with? And two is, could, could you clearly state what they are not doing since we cut the budget that they were doing before we did it?
I've been negotiating with the chair of the, of the board for Friends of Seymour, who's Henry Smith, I don't think that's a surprise to anybody who that is. He's the chair, Philip Moyn, who is the, I believe, chair of the Military Affairs Committee as well, but also has a seat on the board for Friends of Seymour. And then their staff liaison, Ken Gerard, has been trying to help facilitate communication back and forth. So that's been that piece of it. And then the things that they're not doing, I'm going to go a little bit, a little bit broader than that. I think that Friends of Seymour, going back, you know, 20 years, I think that Friends of Seymour and the Military Affairs Committee have to be focused on events right here at home and relationship-building events right here. I think that it's incredibly important that we have our lobbyists downrange and that we make sure that we are maintaining face recognition and name recognition with our folks that are around the Pentagon and are around the ACC up in Langley and are in Congress, and we're going to continue doing that. But we've also got to focus right here at home. Now, the Military Affairs Committee absorbed some of that through the B Corps socials, through the base newcomers luncheons that they do, through some of those other things. But I want us to get back to having those structured recurring events that are targeted towards the people who are currently stationed right here, as well as the stuff that we're doing out in range. And if that's a rambling answer that does not answer your question, I will absolutely articulate if that does not. But my vision for this is to get back to being able to do more stuff right here in Goldsboro, in Wayne County. And I don't believe that's, frankly, I don't believe that's been happening, other than, let me back up, because I don't want Military Affairs Committee to think that I'm talking about it. They are still doing their part of it. I want Friends of Seymour to do a corresponding piece as well, because some are focused on enlisted, some are focused on officers. I just want to make sure that we're touching as many bases as possible, if not intended.
So I guess I want to be clear that I do understand the importance of having Friends of Seymour. So I'm not against having the Friends of Seymour or local MAC for that matter. But I just don't understand what it is that they're doing, that they have done, that they're not doing. You, you just said that that's a vision that you want to move forward to. But what, after we cut the budget, what did they cut out that they were funding from us that they couldn't fund anymore because we cut the budget?
A lot of what they started doing was the events that they were doing, they started just funding with private dollars and cutting back on some of those events, just being bought. They did cut back on some of the events and kind of went to the Armed Forces Gala model as opposed to something on a more recurring basis. Yes, more?
Can you tell me what your, just, I don't want to put you on the spot.
Your phone.
But what are some of the things that you want to see them start doing locally?
So you've got, well, and some of this I've, I've discussed with them, but I've not discussed a lot of this with the Chamber of Commerce. So if any of them are watching and hear this, I don't want them to fly off the handle. But, you know, we have B Corps socials. I want to make sure that we're hitting the enlisted who are here, those families, as well as the officers who are here. Because there's obviously a piece of this where that someone who is a captain while they're here or is a lieutenant colonel who's getting their first squadron command, they have a career ahead of them where they're going up to, where they're going to go to ACC or go to the Pentagon or go wherever else. But they very likely are going to take a master sergeant with them. They're going to take a staff sergeant with them. And I want to make sure that we're hitting both the enlisted and the officers. And I don't, I hope I'm not offending anybody by saying this, but I don't think that we've done that as rigorously as we need to certainly post COVID. Counsel, any other comments, questions?
So next week or whenever, we're going to take a vote on it next week or whatever? Is that, is that, does that be, I mean, not next week, but next meeting?
If we, if we have something that we're in agreement, then yes. What I, what I would ask is that this remain on old business in the work session. Right now, this draft has not been, you know, has not been approved by, by their board, or certainly nor, nor has it been by ours. But I don't want to bring something back to this council that council has not seen as certainly a final version of it. I want us to be able to support this with some excitement. I don't want it to just be something that we're, you know, really hesitant about. So until we have something that we can't, that we can't support and be excited about, then we're probably going to leave it on the, on the work session.
Okay, so, so just, I mean, I have a problem with increasing it. And the reason I have a problem with increasing it is because I feel like there are other, other balls and other things that we could chase that we're not chasing. And when I say that, we, we chased a sexy object, which was the Jets. But we haven't chased the, the childcare situation, which we're in the desert. We haven't chased the legislation for, for spouse licensure. We haven't chased that as well. We haven't chased some legislation to change the adjustable dates for our schools starting so that we can have flexible dates. Just so that, I have a problem with giving more money when there's a lot of other things that we could do to improve the quality of life of our AMR out there at Seymour.
Well, and, and, you know, we haven't had this conversation the way that we probably, probably should have. I agree with you, and part of what I want to see through this, through MAC, through our lobbying efforts, both at the state level and federal level, are those things. Because as much as we had to respond to the specific issue of the divestment of a squadron, you're absolutely right that the other pieces have to happen. My vision is that Friends of Seymour would be a piece of that. My vision is that Friends of Seymour, Military Affairs Committee, our lobbyists up in, up in DC, that very much would be expected to be a piece of that.
And I agree with that, you know what I'm saying? And I hope that it would be. But I also, I go back to us just being the ex-officio. We don't have a voting voice. So at the end of the day, they decide what to do, and we're still sitting on the outside looking in. And I think because nobody on that actual board can speak for the city as a whole, that the city needs a seat on the actual board. That's a voting member so they can get their agenda pushed across as well. Because we do know that we don't have a voting piece right now, and that's a major concern.
The, the reason is drafted as it is for that, because that's a very important point. Two things. One, session law, two years ago, or was it four? How many years ago was session law passed where that if you are a member of an elected body and you are also on a private board, that if you, if that private board comes up for funding, you are not allowed to take part in the discussion of the vote? So that was about two years ago. So if we did have a, if we as in, one of us were appointed to sit on that board when it came up for a discussion of how they were going to spend their funds in here or what we were going to allot to them, we would have to recuse ourselves.
Yeah, but we could put mad on him because he's not an elected official, and he could have a voting right.
Well, and the, the trying to strike a balance there is if you notice, the language around a finance committee is to be made up of the city manager, county manager, and a member of Friends of Seymour board to oversee all expenditure of public funds. So any public funds would have to go through that finance committee to see how they're going to be spent. Now, the private funds, to your point, I have no exact, I agree with, I can see one of your eyes because we're kind of at a weird angle here. But the, the point on that one was to make sure that there were some safeguards for the public funds.
I just think that. Yeah, I just think that we need a voting voice on, on the Friends of Seymour. Because we have an agenda as a city council, as a whole, of us seven get together and we say what we want to see. And we should have somebody represented on that council or that board to speak for us as a council. And not just sit there and voice our, our opinion, but not have any input when it comes time to vote.
That's a well articulated point. I will continue trying to negotiate that point. I don't see any, any fault in that argument. Counsel, any other major points that you, as presented, I realize this is very short notice, but as you see other points that you feel strongly about and can very articulately put, put out there, I want to take them forward because I know that there is an arrangement to be struck. It's too important that we, the county, military, Local MAC, Friends of Seymour, that we're doing this, you know, together and that we're doing it in a way that we trust each other and believe in each other. So any, any other suggestions and things that are really critical, please do bring forward.
Well, the way it's drafted, we would have input. It says the City of Goldsboro and County of Wayne will each name their duly appointed manager to serve as an ex officio representative of Friends of Seymour, who will endeavor to attend and provide input to the overall direction and guide it to Friends of Seymour. So it looks like we would have input.
We have input, but, but when it comes time to vote, we wouldn't have a voice when it comes to vote. We could sit there and say what our agenda is all day long, but wouldn't have the right to vote on it. So that's my problem. My problem is I understand that whoever represents us will articulately, you know, argue our opinion or our, our point, but when it comes time to vote, we won't have a voice.
We would, we would have a voice on the expenditure of public funds, but not on private funds. You're, you are, you're absolutely right about that, as it's currently drafted. We would have a voice, we would have a vote, but the vote would be specific to the public funds.
Well, it, it, to the public funds and the agenda, what they're going to pursue.
Right.
So the agenda is just as important to me because I see that, that, that we dropped the ball on, on a lot of things. So the agenda is just as important to me as voting on, on the funds. Because the agenda, you know, the agenda is what we're pushing for, for Seymour. So that, so, so the agenda i- is important. It's not just the money for me. It's, it's also pushing our agenda as well.
One second. Counsel, any other comments, questions at this time? Obviously, reach out to me as you have time to think about it, digest it, and then get, get back to me. But as things progressed, I wanted to make sure that we get a version in front of council so you can, you just be able to be involved in this thing. I'm certainly not trying to operate in a vacuum here. All right. Moving on, we'll move over to item three C. Counsel, in your packets, responding to council's request, you have a few different documents. You have, I'm getting to the right spot. Laura, I stand corrected, Friends of Seymour, with, with each of you, if you had strong opinions on any of the individual proposals, but I wanted just as quick reference to be able to give you the cover sheet and the cost associated with each one. We also have, per request, we also have the work that was done by our Human Resources Director to pull the City Manager salaries for like-sized cities as of the beginning of the current fiscal year. And then we also have what was the final draft of the agreement. This is the one that was made available to council at our City Attorney's Office. The only thing that is different is the red lines have been removed. So counsel, we got a decision to make on, on what our next step is. Counselman, I see your, I see your glasses up. Go ahead.
Before we move into the subject of the, the search, I'd like to speak just a minute regarding the contract that Matt has put forth per our request to the council. And just make a couple of comments and try not to repeat myself again. But I just, I don't, I really want to just, again, point out the contract that's been presented to us and the length of that contract and the payout component of it, and the opportunity to only be in a, a two-year contract that's renewable annually. And if we decide that we as a group want to part company with our manager, there's no financial penalty for doing so. And a fun fact I learned last week that I'm not sure if anybody's aware of, that Matt currently volunteers his time some, when he's available, to sit on an assessment team for one of the search firms. I think, I think that, that speaks volumes that, that we're trying to decide, you know, if we, what we want to do about a manager when the interim that's sitting in that chair actually isn't thought of enough that he is asked to help vet managers that are seeking employment elsewhere. I think that's certainly something worth mentioning. And if we go down the road of the, the search and we end up selecting another candidate, I mean, it isn't just the money about the search as much as it, what, what would it cost us, bottom line, by the time somebody was in the chair, relocated, and whatever certification and stuff that they needed if they were, and on where they were coming from. And I think this, all of that is worth certainly considering very, very heavily before we move, move forward. And I know that everybody had an opportunity to, to speak with the majority of our leaders, department heads regarding Matt and their desire to see him move forward. And I've, I've told several people over a period of time that always felt like there was three things that you needed to be a successful council representative. And that was common sense and an understanding, as, as much as you can, of municipal government, and follow your staff. Follow your, take, take the advice of your staff because they're the experts and we're just the elected body. And, and that being said, I mean, everybody's had an opportunity to speak to, to our department heads. And I, I just really would like to see us come together and, and approve Matt's contract that we asked him to, to get together. And more importantly, I would like to see us come together because we've made most of our major decisions all on the same page and in harmony. And if there's any way to do that, the more the merrier. I, I would certainly be okay with putting that in the form of a motion. But I, I would love to, to see us talk about that and let's figure that out before we move on the search component of it. Because there's going to come a day that if, if we do accept Matt's contract and he does become our manager, there's going to come a day that he, he's going to retire or whatever down the road, and the council is going to have to seek and figure out a search firm. And I've, I've read through all those proposals and I've learned a few things in there and, and understand what, what's involved in, in doing a search. And we're going to have to do that one day. But I just can't see doing that when we have the caliber of person that's willing to continue the service to the city. I just really would like to see us seriously consider that and, and move on accepting his contract, and let's save our search for another day. I don't think I've been too repetitive, but that's my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, any other comments at this time? Okay.
When you-
Counsel, we're good.
When you have that many department heads that come to a council, all in agreement, saying this is the leader that we want. This man listens to us. He may not always agree with us on every, but we work together as a team. And all the people in the meeting said, we are team players. We need continuity. We had department heads that came to us and said, if you continue with this search, it's going to put back some of the projects that we have been working on as a team. And it doesn't just affect us with the search. I agree with you, Councilwoman Boyett, you're not just talking about the search thing, but you're also talking about your labor cost. I calculated and used a formula that I use when I'm, I'm doing headhunting, and I calculated it's going to cost us anywhere between a hundred and fifteen and a hundred and twenty thousand dollars if we do a search and replace that individual. So you're looking at all other kinds of calculated costs. It's unprecedented that you had that many department heads that came and said, this is the leader that we want. And we, as a council, I wanted to make sure I'm stating it publicly, we are the ones that went to Matt and said, Matt, will you please bring us back a drafted contract so that we can approve this within the next few meetings as a City Manager? Then everything changed. Matt, I will tell you, because you were not in the meeting, and so I want to state it publicly to you exactly what I said to your department heads. Number one, when we were elected, we are a council manager type of government. We're not a council-directed type of government. And I wanted to publicly apologize to you because, Matt, I have seen council members go directly behind your head, straight to directors to get things taken care of, and I will even say the, I would, I will even say, I. At times, we have been guilty in going behind your head to get things done when our role is strictly to set the policies, set the goals, set the expectations, and you're the manager and you are supposed to, with your leaders, to carry out and, and to make sure that the policies that we have set, we're strictly the, you're the administrative part, we're the policy part. And we have been guilty, I have been guilty, in certain times in micromanaging you, in micromanaging you. It's unprecedented that that many City Managers, City Department Heads would come to a City Council. And I know as a CEO, if I had that many directors coming to me and saying, this is who we want as our leader, I, I would honor that. I mean, we have multiple cities out there looking at City Manager right now. The talent pool is very slim. There are none that have the credentials and the talent that this man has. And is it because Matt, because of a misunderstanding that maybe Matt didn't tell us this was going on or that was going, that's not his role? Again, we set policies, we set goals, we set, we, we have not given him any clearly defined KPIs in the last eight months. We needed to come together as a council and say, these are our clear expectations of what we wanted Matt. But instead, we said, hey, go ahead and bring us a contract. We, you did exactly what we asked you to do as a council. Bring us a contract, we're ready to make a decision. Get it drafted, hire yourself an attorney. And so this is a contract, this, this is a contract with a sweet exit strategy. You will not find another contract across the state of North Carolina for a City Manager where you have a two-year exit strategy. So that if he's not happy, we're not happy, by the time we have set our KPIs, our expectations, and define them clearly for him, we have a sweet exit strategy. We do not have to pay out what we paid out to Tim Salmon. My recommendation would be that we accept this contract, that we come together and accept, because these department heads have come to us and said, we're ready to move forward. You cannot have success if you don't have continuity. And they have said, look, we're fed up, we're frustrated, we have had all these changes. We are ready to move together as a team.
Counsel, we'll thank you for your comments. There, well, before I say that, counsel, are there any other comments at this time?
I, I, I would just like to comment on a couple of things that were said.
Please go ahead.
Just to make it abundantly clear, a lot of council members up here did not know that Matt was hiring a lawyer. So that he didn't come to us and, and the council did not, as a whole, tell Matt to go hire a lawyer. And for me and some of the other ones, I'll speak for me. As for me, Matt is doing a great job. However, HR best practice is to post the position. So everything could be done above board and not in the backdoor room. So my stance is that we, we go and we do HR's best practice, which is to post a job. So it has nothing to do with, you know, we telling Matt, and we made a pre, pre-decision before it came before us, at least for me. So, so with that being said, I'd just like to correct that, that the entire council did not know, or at least I didn't. So maybe I wasn't listening when it was said, but I didn't know.
That was a closed session, that we, that discussion that we were-
Hey, Martha. Counselwoman, for your-
I, I would like to clarify something because I am one of those council persons that did not go behind your back, Matt. I always talked to you about everything, even when we started the Choice Neighborhood, you were very supportive and made sure that I was on that list and made sure that I was there. And if I couldn't be there, you gave me information that needed to be done. So if there was anything, there is not a, yes, I do have a good relationship. I like to think that I have a good relationship with the department heads, and we all should as council people. But I was not one of the ones that was be, going behind your back and talking to the different department heads. Even with the Park situation that I did speak with Ms. Felicia about, you knew about that, Lori knew about that. I did not, I'm not one that did, did that. I do think the best practice is to post the position because we want to make sure that we are doing the right thing. I have nothing against you. As a matter of fact, I've often told you how well, and this is, I'm not going into a liability situation, but I do like the, your weekly updates. I do like those. And, but I think we need to post the position, we need to be open and transparent, we need to make sure that this council is doing what we're supposed to do. And I commend the department heads, but I also want you guys not to sell yourself short. And that is something that really bothered me because you are department heads for a reason. You are already leaders, and it's good that you feel that you have a good leader. But I was always told that a good leader leads, and whenever that leader is not there, then that department head is sufficient and can function without that person for a while. So you guys do not, I don't mean to call you guys girls, ladies, gentlemen, do not sell yourself short because you're good at what you do. And I appreciate what you do. I appreciate you reaching out to me and talking to me and the respect that you have given me, and I respect you as well. But I still think we need to post this position.
Counsel, any other comments? Well, my stance on this, I, I would love to, to accept this contract. It's a, the terms on this contract, the, the salary on this contract, the length of time on this contract, it's everything that we, it's, it's everything that a city could want in, in a contract. That being said, this council, if, if we're going, if we're going to hire somebody, we need to be able to do it with some excitement. I, I think that Matt has done a fantastic job. I haven't hidden that. I think that Matt and I, Matt and I bump heads, I mean, I won't say daily, weekly certainly. We disagree on things consistently, that's perfectly fine. And I'm still telling everybody, he's doing a really good job. I mean, we had an auto presentation this morning, or not this morning, it feels like a long time ago, we had about forty-five minutes ago. He's- He's, he's getting us in the direction that we want to be. He's doing a really good job. And the reason that we're doing the Parks and Recreation Master Plans and the land use plans and the capital investment plans, and the reason that we're, we're finally getting to where that we're doing large-scale repairs and projects in, on our water and sewer system is, is because of these department heads and Matt. A lot of the things that are coming to fruition are things that he put in place when he was in the assistant city manager role. So, you know, I haven't hidden the fact that I've, as much as I'm a, a certainly post-it and search kind of guy, you know, the guy's been interviewing for eight months now, and we know what we've got. It's a, it's a really attractive contract for a variety of reasons. And so, you know, if, if council can come forward in a somewhat unified way to move forward with that, then I'm here for it. But if we can't, and it's going to be something where that, where that we are hanging this weight around his neck for the duration of his contract, then that's not a direction that I can go. But I would absolutely vote in favor of supporting this, of supporting this contract as it's written, the salary, the term, the exit clauses, the, the benefits, the, it's everything that we could want. It's, it's a straight-down-the-line contract. So with that, hearing council, yes, sir?
That's sort of why I made the comments that I did. I, I would like to see this, to see us come together and make a unified decision and not have to be split because I, I don't, I don't want to put Matt in that position. That, that's, that's why I wanted to sort of talk about it and not just raise my hand and make a motion. I mean, I, I would like to, to see us come together as much as possible and, and get this done, if, if that's possible. I mean, I'll, I'll be happy to.
Yes, councilman.
But I thought we already voted on it. I thought we already voted that we were going to do a search.
We did, we're just, we're in discussion. Well, it's an item on the agenda, we're in discussion. We, we have passed that vote, and that's why we're, that's why we've got all these different proposals in front of us. At this point, it's a discussion of the item.
Well, if I may.
You may, please continue.
So the, the reason, Councilwoman White, that I brought it back up was to change direction if the council so chose to do so. I mean, we, we did have a vote to proceed forward with a search, but I would like to make a motion and have majority support, overwhelming majority support from the council to approve Matt's contract, and let's save doing a search for another day when we need, when we need to do so. But again, I don't, I, I want us to be somewhat unified in that. If it, if it turns out that, you know, it's a four-to-three vote or whatever, I mean, that's, I mean, how, how, I know how I'd feel if I felt like that's how I got the job, you know? So it isn't, I, I, I'm really trying to have a discussion and trying to see if we can, if we can get there and the majority of us agree on that, overwhelming majority, not just squeak by, you know? So I value everybody's opinion, and that's why I laid it out like I did.
Yeah, this, this and the budget are the two most important things that we're going to do, guys. Guys and girls, I mean, that's point blank, you know, hiring the manager, setting the budget. That's like one and two, and then number three is something in the line further down the list.
And I, I'm, I'm just wanting to talk about it again because we're just not going to, to, to have a, I mean, best-case scenario is not going to be what we, we have right in front of us in, in those terms. I just really would like to do this if it's at all possible.
But just because we do a search, that mean that Matt isn't going to be the one?
Completely agree with that. And, and I know that it's been said that there, there are those of us that feel like Matt will be the one. And if we feel like that, then we're, in my opinion, then we're wasting money to do a search. If we feel like he's going to be our guy, I mean, I've publicly said, "He's my guy." But if somebody feels like he's probably going to be the guy because he'd be hard to out-credential and he's gave us a sweetheart contract and, and all the things, it's an advantage to what's in front of us, then I, I can't make it make sense to, to spend the money to do a search. You know, I mean, I, I just can't. And I know that, as the mayor said, we're, we're here for two things, and that's to pass a budget and hire a manager. And the struggle is real.
Yes, councilman.
Another thing I would add to that is we're coming upon the holidays. You're looking roughly about twelve weeks for a search. It would be sometime next year before we could even possibly have a candidate, which again, your department heads have said, "Look, we're asking you. We have key projects that we are working on, and we need this unification. We need to know where, we want to go forward together as a team." And I get what Councilwoman White is talking about as far as best practices. But if I were a CEO of a company and I had the best talent right before me, I, I would go ahead and hire that talent and forego the search. And so for me, Councilwoman Boyet, I am in 100% support of what you're saying with absolutely zero percent reservation on my part.
And, and I agree. If, if, if it was a, a private entity and you were the CEO, then you probably wouldn't have the track record that the city of Goldsboro has. We're not doing business above board. So with that, it's important that we be transparent with the process. It has nothing to do with Matt. It has everything to do with the process.
I will, I want to unpackage that one a little, a little bit later on, the, the statement that we're not doing business above board. That one, that one concerns me. If you have any specifics, please, not right now, I want to stay on track, but I, I want to know about that because I want to, we're, we're going to fix that. So I'm not in this thing for...
Well, we, we, we'll fix, and we will talk about it at, at another time, but, but let's not sit here and feel like we, we, we have done the best business practices over the years. Not saying that this council as a whole, I'm saying over the years.
Understood, understood. All right, council. So there's been some discussion. I haven't heard a motion, I've heard lots of discussion. Is there any further discussion right now? Do we want to move forward with a motion on any particular proposal? Do we want to move forward on, on the contract? I need some, I need some direction. Otherwise, I'll just kind of start bulling around and saying what I think I want to do. Councilman?
I have a question.
Yeah, council, uh, councilwoman.
And, and looking at some of the proposals, so these are all, all the proposals. If we request a proposal and then we get all the proposals, we, who requested the proposals? I can't remember if you did.
Me, I did.
Okay, so did we get, did we send out a request for proposals everywhere? Did we?
No, we didn't do a full, a full RFP. I reached out to the School of Government, the League of Municipalities, and a number of other managers and kind of asked, as well as actually internally as well, saying, "All right, who are the, the main ones in North Carolina?" And the main ones in North Carolina have been Mercer Developmental Associates and GovHR. GovHR is now merged with someone else now, they're called MGT. They're in here, Developmental Associates is in here. Mercer, Mercer is actually the firm that placed our former city manager. And so I just didn't feel like there was much reason to, to go that route, even though they did a good job of bringing a slate of candidates ultimately as council that made the decision. I just felt like there was probably not a whole lot of reason to go there. And so then taking those that are the standard ones in North Carolina, I then got some advice from the league, from School of Government, from a, a few other managers. And that's where we then got one, or got a proposal from Polyhire. Again, Polyhire, the, the gentleman who is their founder and CEO, actually has ties to Goldsboro, is currently up in DC, but nonetheless has ties to Goldsboro. Sumter is, they're out of Georgia, but they have, everyone in their firm is former city managers, and they were really good to talk to. The advantage, they're not a known body. They're kind of an unknown in North Carolina, which might be a little bit of, if there's any fear of going with the same old group, then that could be a really good option. And then also reached out to the COG, our Council of Government as well, just to see if there could be any assistance there at a different price structure. So that's how we got to the five that are in front of us. It was basically reaching out to all of the usuals and then a few others as well. Yes, no, the councilman.
Where is the list of all the things the COG does for that price besides helping us with the city managership?
The, I don't have that in your packet. I did send out a link in, in an email where you can simply Google them, you know, layer on, with all the different things that they do. They're, the, our COG actually, Mr. Livingston, do you mind talking a little bit through what David and the COG do?
They do some placement services, but that's really not their strong. I, I was in that role, and, you know, for some smaller towns, place some managers. You know, you, you need, if you're wanting to do this right, you need an exhaustive search that's going to be very performance-oriented, similar to Developmental Associates. I'm not recommending them per se, but they're going to be one of the more, I'm just experienced with Developmental Associates. You're not going to get that same level of service. You kind of pay, you get what you pay for.
Yeah, the, the COG, the executive director over there, a huge credit to him. He was willing to submit a proposal, you know, for the sake of conversation. He would certainly love to have us back, back in the COG as a dues-paying member of the COG. But, you know, even he acknowledged, he said, "I, I would give you all of, all of me, I would be personally handling it, but I'm not a search firm." So he, you know, he did acknowledge that, but it was at a different price point. So, councilman.
If, if I'm still correct, also, Wilson, Rocky Mount, and is it Ashfire? I was reading this weekend, Ashfire or Ashville, one of them is looking at city manager as well.
According to my contact at the School of Government, city managers and assistant city managers, there's about forty searches going on right now around the state.
I also have another question.
All right, councilwoman.
During our department head meetings, which by the way, I thoroughly enjoyed hearing everyone supported Matt, how great Matt's been, but Mrs. Bernadette, she did mention doing an in-house search that would not cost us any money. Can we talk about that?
We can.
I have a question about in-house search.
Sorry, councilwoman, and then I'll, we'll come on that.
Okay, in-house search, that includes just going in the, doing, through the department heads? Just go, is, what, what does that entail?
So I, if you'd like, if you'd like to come up, I, I'm going to go on record of saying, as you're walking up, I'm, I'm strongly against doing an in-house search.
I am too, but I, I want, I want, I want everybody to hear what an in-house search is.
What it would be, again, you have, you have the microphone, what it would be is you would be collecting the resumes, you'd be posting the job and then collecting the, the resumes.
We, we could do an in-house search. It would include everything that a search firm would do with the exception of the assessment. Now, we have done assessments for some of the department heads. Our chief, I was, I think, the last one we did, when Chief Dixon was here, we did a in, internal search. But when you say in-house search, I'm thinking an internal search, which means that your HR department would handle that. What I would recommend, if we wanted to do that, that we could do the, all the advertisements that any of your search firms can do, and I would run the applications through the mayor and the council. And so there would be no one in-house, maybe other than myself or the city attorney, that would have access to those applications.
So I, I do, I, I just have a question, I'm sorry.
Let's let councilwoman finish her, her questions, then I'll...
I understand, I, I wanted it explained because I wanted everybody to hear what an in-house...
It means that we would advertise just like we do every other position in city.
So I wanted everybody to understand that I, I am not in favor of an in-house search. But I wanted, I wanted to be fair, and I want everybody to know and understand what it was, you know, before you just say no.
Yes, ma'am. Counselor.
Would, would there be a conflict of interest with you posting on like the, the legal municipalities and all that, all the other places that are searched?
No, we, we post...
And the only reason I'm asking that is because ultimately whoever we select will, will be supervising you. So, so I don't want there to be like a conflict of interest.
No, there wouldn't be any conflict, just like any other position, really.
I'm just making sure, I just want to check that box.
Counselor, my, the reason that I'm going to be strongly against doing a search in-house is because even though I, I do not question Ms. Dove's integrity, this is not that at all. But it puts her and her staff in a very weird situation when they're in charge of hiring their boss. That's, that's an odd scenario to be in. In other large organizations that I've been around, they've always avoided doing that, you know?
Well, we wouldn't be hiring our boss, you all would be hiring your...
Right, but you'd be directly engaged in collecting, in, in collecting the resumes. And my fear, when you're dealing with these sorts of positions, you're dealing with professionals and their livelihoods, and most times when people apply to jobs, they don't want their current employer to know that they've applied until they're named a finalist or something like that. If something were to leak out, and the only people that were controlling those resumes were our HR department and this council, that ain't good. And I really don't want to put us in that position. So what I would prefer, if we're going, you know, if we're going to do, to do a search, let someone else handle the resumes, you know, assign a, a, a top six based on what we say are our criteria. Let them do kind of the, the finals selection. If we don't like those finalists, let them, then go down further into their list. But I, I think we need to keep the resumes out of, off the city servers and outside of city hands for as long as possible. Counselor.
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we accept Matt's contract as presented for approval.
Okay, motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion has been made and properly seconded to accept the contract that is, that is in front of you as written, right? So the one that is in front of you as written, Matt? Do we need to go into a closed session for, for this?
Not for that, if you're just, just whether or not you're going to accept the contract.
Matt, do you want a few minutes to review the, the version that is in front of council?
No, I, I know what's in there.
Okay, all right. Give me just a second. Motion has been made and properly seconded to approve the version of the city manager employment agreement that is in front of council. Is there any further discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll call the vote. All in favor of approving the contract as presented, please raise your hands. All opposed, same side. Okay, motion fails on four-to-three vote. So with that, let's move into, into selections. Counsel, my recommendation for our, for our proposal. So grand irony in all of this is that Mr. Livingston is a recognized expert in the field by Developmental Associates and has served on a number of their search processes, their assessment centers, and is actively engaged in one, or at least maybe just finished it up last week.
Just finished it up.
I just want to make sure that everyone is, is aware of that, if that factors in at all.
Two days of free time for them?
Two, yeah, two days, two days of, of donated time to their bottom line. Your generosity knows no bounds, Matt. If that impacts anyone for Developmental Associates, just wanted to put that on the table. Polyhire, I actually think quite a lot of. I will note that they are the most expensive of the proposals that were brought to council. They are currently doing Zebulon, they've done a, a, a few different ones around North Carolina. I'm sure that as you guys Googled around their website, taken a look at them, you, you probably got a feel for it. Them being the most expensive one, I would probably set that one, Developmental Associates, aside just for the sake of, of conversation. I would set the Eastern Carolina Council to the side, again, just for the sake of conversation, and then probably go either in between GovHR, which is now MGT, or Sumter. MGT, even though their proposal is coming, their, their... MGT, even though their proposal is coming, their contact is coming out of Illinois and their headquarters is down in Florida, they do have a substantial North Carolina presence. Their cost was at twenty-five thousand plus, plus fees, just like any, any of the other ones. And Sumter out of Georgia, what came in at twenty-two, seven fifty. My recommendation, even though these other three, I actually think quite a lot. The gentleman that runs Developmental Associates, Mr. Strauss or Dr. Strauss, actually phenomenal at what he does. If I'm not mistaken, is he currently doing any searches for the city as well? Yeah, so he, he's doing one right now. And he absolutely gets used here in a, in a good way and does good work. Polyhire, they're, they're top flight, is purely just, they're the most expensive one in our list. And the cog we've already discussed. So, that's why I'm saying, out of these two, to simplify the discussion, I would recommend that we go with either Sumter or MGT. I probably lean towards Sumter purely because they are, it's not the same old thing. They were doing, doing something a little bit different. And I told everybody from the very beginning that we would try to, try to do that. We would try to do things that are a little bit different and not using the same folks on repeat. So, those are my comments, council, we need, need some discussion.
Well, I like Sumter. I really liked Polyhire, but like you said, it is just too expensive. And then if we go with the person, then they are going to charge us twenty thousand dollars more.
Right.
You know, so, that one was out. So, I do.
One thing I would recommend is you go with the one that's got the best track record. And if you research that, you'll find out what that one is, that has the best track record in placement. And they, they have all those, some don't want to reveal that, but you look at those and see which ones have been the most successful in the past.
Can I say what I believe, the one I believe you're referring to? Is that development?
Yes, it is.
Developmental Associates. Bottom line is they, they do good work. And their base fee is right smack in between MGT, which is the other big known one in North Carolina, and Sumter. If council, you know, goes into it, you know, eyes wide open on the reality that, you know, Matt is very much a known entity, great. I think they do, I think they really do, do, do good work.
Would that be a conflict of interest?
I know.
I'm trying to do this for my best interests, it has nothing to do with that.
Oh, I understand, I'm not accusing you of anything, I'm not, actually not accusing any, anyone of anything. I'm just trying to make sure that everyone's, I don't want anyone hearing something after the fact and being caught off guard. Yes, ma'am.
If we go with developmental, would that be a conflict of interest? Because he was on the, just, I want, I want to hear it, I want everybody to hear it.
I don't think so, and the reason I say that is because he's not going to be on the assessment center for his own hire. You know, and he's not been on the assessment center for any other hires here in Goldsboro. So, I don't think, I don't think it's a conflict of interest purely because, to say that purely because he has been. And it's also worth noting that most likely whoever they recommend is someone else who has been on their assessment centers. Because that's part of how Developmental Associates gets to know everybody out there, is by having them take part in other searches. And so they kind of know the field ahead of the game. Is that a fair way of explaining it?
No.
Oh, yes, sir.
How does Matt fit into that equation, so far as the search?
He does, he does, and it's not, that's not fair to, to put him into the middle of things. Plus, he very likely would be a candidate. You know, I'm not going to forecast any of that, that is for you and your soul searching to do. But no, he would not, he would not play a role in it, I would.
That's not what I meant.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
How, how is him being considered for the position going to factor into how Developmental Associates processes and brings applicants forward to us?
Can I answer that question? Because I just, there were several internal candidates, and I think that the ones that were the top ones, I can't really talk about it because, you know, there's, but they, they deal with internal and external candidates all the time. It's the same process that you have to go through, whether you're an internal candidate or an external candidate. And whether you get picked to go through the assessment center is based on, you know, your criteria, your qualifications and whatnot. Did I answer your question, sir?
I think that, I have no doubt that they would bring forward excellent candidates, that's, I don't really, I don't really doubt that part of it, that is a valid point.
So, they, so they gave us two of our best candidates, so that was the one that I had selected over the weekend, was Developmental Associates, and for two reasons. Number one, they gave us two of our top directors, which were Ms. Bernadette Dove and our police chief. And so, and of course, Matt, didn't they help us?
Yeah, I went through the assessment process for Developmental Associates.
So, I wrote down that, that as a factor, and then they're the only local government search firm located in the state of North Carolina. And to me, to, they already have contact with individuals in North Carolina, they know our state, they know, they would know more about local government than if we brought in an outside firm. And so, that would be my recommendation.
I just wanted to make a correction, Developmental Associates has placed Felicia Brown, Parks and Rec, Chief Stempion, Fire Department, and Bert Sherman, Public Utilities. And they have also placed, they're working now on a police major in the police department. So, they've placed about four of our.
So, you have worked with them, you know?
Worked with them every day.
Yeah, good deal.
And do you have any concerns or anything working with them, Ms. Bernadette?
I don't.
That would, that would be my recommendation.
Council, entertain a motion to, to authorize me to execute a contract with Developmental Associates for a total contract not to exceed, so looking at the basic fee plus, plus total terms. I would entertain a motion to allow the mayor to execute a contract with Developmental Associates for total contract value not to exceed twenty-six thousand dollars. And to also execute the budget amendments, the corresponding budget amendment.
So, moved.
Second.
All right, motion has been made and properly seconded, is there any discussion, councilwoman?
Just one question. Matt, will you be putting yourself forth as a candidate?
I don't know. To be honest with you.
It's sad.
All right, motion's been made and properly, yes, ma'am.
The budget limits will have to come back, councilwoman.
Well, you nodded, I thought that I, oh, I, I thought I was trying to, trying to save a step for being there. So, motion's been made and properly seconded to authorize the mayor to negotiate and execute a contract with Developmental Associates for a total fee not to exceed twenty-six thousand dollars, is that correct? Madam Clerk, is that correct? All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the vote, all in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, same sign. Seeing one, motion passes. All right, we have firm and we're underway. Council, this is going to be a very, a very busy time for us. Of course, we're going through the holidays, but also Developmental Associates is, is very good at, at pulling together pieces of council to be able to get feedback, so we actually are posting exactly what it is that we're looking for. So, be on the lookout, we're going to need a lot of, a lot of time from folks over the next, next few weeks, but we will get going just as quickly as we possibly can. All right. Mr. Livingston, if you would, please get us going with item four D.
Thank you, Mayor. We have an exciting opportunity coming up next year with Cycle NC, we've got Amanda Justice here, Travel and Tourism, to kind of give you an overview of that.
Good evening, everybody. As Matt said, Goldsboro has a really great opportunity to be a host city for Cycle NC, which goes from the mountains to the coast, and this would happen next year in October. So, just to tell you a little bit about what Cycle NC is, it's one of the most successful amateur bike rides in the United States and has been voted best biking in America. Participants of the 2023 ride range from nine years old to eighty-five. The average age is sixty-one, representing forty-one states, plus DC, and five other countries. The average annual income of Cycle NC participants is one hundred and twenty-five thousand plus. And they're expecting anywhere from eight hundred and fifty to nine hundred riders for this event. Goldsboro has the opportunity to host one of the overnight stops during the Mountains to Coast Ride in October of 2025. The date that we're looking at right now, if the schedule works out the way they want to, is October ninth. And we would love to have them stay at Freedom Field, camp out at Freedom Field. Goldsboro, this is not the first rodeo, so to speak, for you guys. We actually hosted this event in 2013, and they camped out at Herman Park. Also, Mount Olive was a, what they call a break stop in 2021. Tourism will be the lead sponsor in this. So, all of the funds for this event would come from the tourism budget. Typically, what happens is there's a welcome party on the day that the cyclists ride into town. It is usually from four to six. We're looking at hosting that down at the hub. The cyclists would ride in, they'd set up their camp, we'd have a welcome event at the hub. And then they are welcome to go downtown, eat, shop, visit, and then they're scheduled to be back to camp by ten o'clock. And then they go into quiet time. This is a rough economic impact for this event. Anywhere from two hundred to three hundred riders will stay in our hotels at an ADR, average daily rate of ninety-two dollars. So, that would equal about twenty-seven thousand dollars, twenty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars in hotel revenue with sixteen hundred dollars in occupancy tax. Based on a formula that Visit NC uses for day trippers, an average spend for an event like this would be three hundred and sixty dollars per rider. So, you're looking at nine hundred riders times the three hundred and sixty dollars, so you're roughly looking at over a three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollar economic impact for a less than twenty-four hour event being held downtown. So, that just kind of gives a little bit of history about the event and what it would look like, and I'm open to any questions that you may have.
Ms. Justice, we're ready for questions, is there any ask of council with this, or is this one purely for information?
Tonight is purely informational, there will not be any road closures that will be asked. Yes, ma'am. I think the only thing that may come to council is the fact that they will be camping overnight. And they're going to be asking to camp overnight downtown in Freedom Field. And I think that has to come before you guys. But this was just purely to tell you about the event, let you know how successful it is, and see if there's any questions I can answer before that comes to council.
Councilwoman, please, go ahead.
So, when you say camp in Freedom, so you mean that they will have their bicycles and they will have their camp, and they will be camping there.
So, it's, it's, majority of them are what's considered primitive camping. So, they would come in, there's a, there's a huge caravan that goes along with this event. So, you'll have the people that will, the actual Cycle NC administrative people, support staff, they'll come in that morning about nine o'clock. And they'll start setting everything up, and they have it down to a science. But the cyclists, actually, the ones that don't stay in the hotel, they, they actually camp primitively intense. So, they will come in, throw their tent up, like I said, enjoy the welcome party. Hopefully, we can get some of the community involved in welcoming them in. And then the next morning, by nine o'clock, they're back on their bikes, pedaling the next fifty miles to the next stop.
Okay, well, my safety aspect, how, how, what are your plans? And how are we going to be a part of making sure that they are safe while they're in our city?
So, we have kind of formed a committee with Parks and Recreation, Downtown Development, and the Police Department. So, we've had a couple of meetings to address that prior to me coming to council. So, we will do what is necessary if the police department feels like that we need to pay for off-duty security or ever how that works, that would be something that tourism would absorb the cost of.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I would recommend you go ahead and approve it so she doesn't have to come back. I think the economic impact of this thing alone is worth going ahead and moving forward on it, and it'll be good for the city. And they need to go ahead and plan so that they can make their adjustments on their calendars and start their planning and not have any kind of unforeseen changes.
They will be making the announcement for the actual track of the ride very soon. Which is, again, why I wanted to go ahead and bring it to you and not wait, because they'll start advertising it to the cyclist.
Councilwoman.
Okay, so, if we approved this, because you said, want to make clear, want to be clear. So, if we approve this, my concern is the, is the safety aspect.
Okay.
So, if we approve this, you said you have already worked and talked with the policemen and how they're going to handle this.
Well, we.
So, we will have that, because that's the only thing, I want, I want to make sure that, you know, when we approve this, that we have safety in place.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. So, we, we have, in our committee meeting, basically Cycle NC sends a packet of everything that they need and everything they require. And we have sat down and we have gone through that. And as far as a hundred percent locking in what we need for security, we have not done that, but we have had discussions. So, whatever the police department feels like we need to do to keep them safe, that's what we'll do.
Okay, well, should the council know what they're doing?
Well, we certainly will, the event's in October, and so there's, there's ample time to finalize those plans. What, what I would suggest that we do, because if this is one where that we, where that they've got to do a year-long promotion, we need to either commit or not.
Right.
And, and I have total faith in, in our police and Parks and Rec and Travel and Tourism, that they're going to get it right. And absolutely, Councilwoman Jones, if you would like, what we can do as we get closer to this event, maybe six months out or something like that, put it back on the agenda so we can see the actual site plan.
Almost like a plan, like, okay, they're going to come in, this is how it's going to work. Basically, this is just to, again, let you know about the event and so we can go ahead and let Cycle NC know, yes, we're absolutely excited about hosting the event. Or, you know.
I'm sorry.
I have a question, you getting ready to make a motion?
Uh huh, yeah.
I have a question before you do that. So, just to be clear, I'm all for it, I think it's a great event, but we don't know how they're going to enter the city and exit the city right now, right?
That is correct, and the reason for that is some of the cities that they had originally wanted to, to do in the western part of North Carolina were part of, are still part of, in recovery.
Okay.
So, they are trying to work those out right now. So, I don't know exactly how they're going to, to get to us, but that is definitely something that I can bring back and say, okay, here's, here's how they're going to get to us, here's where they're going to be prior to us, here's how they're coming into the city, here's, here's how they're going to exit the city. It's just very preliminary right now.
Okay, and the last thing, you'll be enlisting the, the use of our local bike clubs, since they have the, the knowledge of how to escort bike riders up and down highways without closing them, are we going to do that?
That is something that we can, we can look at, yes, sir.
This is something that I want council to, I want council to go ahead, go ahead and approve if it's something that we can. And the reason for that is this is very, this is the same mountain, mountain to coast group that was in two thousand and twelve, thirteen?
It was two thousand and thirteen.
Thirteen, that camped all over Herman Park, you know, by, by ten PM, they're lights out because they're trying to get sleep for the next day, by nine. next day. By nine AM, they're back on their bikes, they're gone. You know, it's not a, you know, week-long festival that you have to worry about trash pickup or anything like that. It's a, it's a quick in and out, nice little economic bump, and, and then they're gone. If you, if council wants to go and look on the Mountain to Coast, it's not the Mountain to Coast, it's not the Mountain to Sea Trail, it's the Mountain Coast Bike Ride.
Right, on the Cycle NC website.
And that, when you go look on the Cycle NC website, you can see the previous years, how they mapped out across the state, and they always kind of change it a little bit. And so with that, I would entertain, actually, Councilwoman, you were going with this.
I move that we approve the event with the understanding of the linguistics to be brought back to the council.
Motion's been made to approve the event, specifically the overnight camping piece, with the understanding that it will be brought back to council a minimum of ninety days prior to the event-
Right.
-for, for site reviews and site plans.
I'll second it.
All right. Is that a fair statement? All right, motion's been made and properly seconded. Is there any further discussion? All right, all in favor, please raise your hands. All opposed, same sign. Seeing none, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Good stuff, that's gonna be a good one. All right, so Mr. Livingston, if you would please, item four E.
Thank you, Mayor. Item four E is a proposed repayment plan. As the board may recall, I sent out some documentation on Fremont's current bill to the City of Goldsboro. We provide sewer services to Fremont, who also in turn provides services to Eureka. Eureka has, as many of you know, has been in financial distress for some time now and has not been able to pay their bills to the town of Fremont. However, that doesn't preclude Fremont's obligation to pay the City of Goldsboro. They notified us saying that they were not going to pay their portion of the bill, and we were like, okay, but we still have to figure out a repayment plan for you to keep our ratepayers whole. And so I asked the Finance Department to give us some suggestive language on a repayment plan, because we don't, we can't treat them like a typical utility customer. They're a contracted customer, and we can't just turn off their sewer services like you can with other people. So Ms. Gwynne came up, and her staff came up with a proposed repayment plan that I've also shared with Fremont, and we need to have some kind of action on that, because if, should this go to some kind of legal settlement or something like that, I want to be able to say that we had a repayment plan that was voted on and approved by the City Council, and this is what we're proposing in your package there. Any questions you can ask Catherine about it?
I did have one question. What is the penalty for past due balances for residential customers and our business customers?
I don't know off the top of my head, but fifteen.
Not percent or dollars? Dollars, right. The one percent stated here would be dramatically more than that. Council, any other comments, questions? I'll, I will add to this one, that Mr. Livingston, you've done a really solid job, both kind of talking me off the ledge, as well as trying to make peace between the Development Alliance, the stakeholders, and Fremont, the stakeholders, and Eureka, and trying to get a package that can, that can work. Long story short, the city, well, the town of Eureka, you know, has an outstanding bill to Fremont for sewer due to the last named storm, last hurricane that came through, that exceeds, and if I'm stating this in any way, please correct me, but basically exceeds their annual operating budget, and their simple reality is they, they can't pay it. And so Fremont has come to us, saying, well, we want you to pay for it. Well, we want to be good neighbors, we want to be good partners, we can't put stuff on the backs of all the other ratepayers, to Mr. Livingston's point that he made to me a number of different times. And also, there's a markup. So what we sell sewer capacity to Fremont for is a different number than they're selling it to Eureka. And so there's, it's got to be all parties' sort of agreement here, so I appreciate you playing mediator and trying to get this thing to a point where that we can keep Eureka from losing their charter again. I think that's a nice way to summarize it. Maybe? All right, so Mr. Livingston, you need a motion to approve this plan as presented?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right, council, entertain a motion to present this repayment plan as presented in this email that's provided to us.
Same.
Motion's been made and properly seconded to approve the plan as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your hands. All opposed, same sign. Seeing none, motion passes. Thank you, everybody. All right, and next, we have, let me put that under this side of the notebook. There we go. Next, item four F. Madam Clerk, if you would.
Good afternoon, council. Evening. Our item is Historic District Commission appointments. There's currently three vacancies on Historic District Commission, two alternates and one full-time member. I've included in your packet a resolution based off the way the applicants come, came in to the system. There were some in between them, there was a couple in front, but these were all the applicants that were their first choice or their only choice. Applicants listed on that chart as well were, they had, it was their second or third choice, it was not their first choice to be on Historic District Commission. So that's why I listed them in this manner. There are gonna be other Historic District Commission appointments that are gonna be needed in the end of December, but for today, we need to fill these so the historic can have their next meeting.
All right, council, these as presented would include Mr. Peacock, this is his only choice from District Three, would include Mr. Archibald from District Five, it's his only choice, and District Five, Ms. Musgrave, it's her first choice. I'll also note that the Historic District-
Excuse me, there's Ms. Nancy DeLea, is that right?
That's what I'm, that's where I'm going with this, actually.
Okay.
The, Ms. DeLea submitted an application that was, it was received Friday prior to the publishing of all of this. The Historic District goes across District One, District Three, and District Five in parks. Ms. Musgrave has a second choice that is Parks and Rec, which I also know is something that she would be very good at. Ms. DeLea, this was her only choice, and that way we could appoint someone from District One, Three, and Five as part of this if it is the pleasure of council.
Yes, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I mean, can we discuss the people? Because I don't, I don't know Mr. Peacock. I'm sure he's a wonderful man, but I do know Derek Rocher, and I think he'd be great for that, and he is in District Three. I don't know how everyone else feels about that.
And I know Derek Rocher just a little bit. I do know Nancy DeLea, she is in District One, and she does know the Historic District very well.
May I ask a question of Mr. Cottle?
Yes, please. Mr. Cottle, if you would approach the, approach the microphone.
Are you still on that, are you still on the Historic District Committee?
I'll vote before I.
Are you still on the Historic Committee? Are you still on the Historic Committee?
I am.
If you would come up, if you don't mind coming up, obviously, we can't force you to do it, but if you don't mind.
I'll wait for you.
Hey, Mr. Cottle, I do, I do have a question for you, because I am familiar with a few of people that serve on the Historic Committee with you, so I just wanted to go back through those, because I am leaning toward your choice, District One. Is Mr. Best still serving from District Five?
Rick Best?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
So he's neighbors with Mr. Archibald, so I would think that you wouldn't want two neighbors in the same district serving on, on that committee. Who else do you have? When I say neighbors, they're on streets or side by side in District Five. What other districts do you have represented already?
Really, maybe, I'm sure somebody would have that. I know I live on Cashwell Drive, and that's what I know, but I'm really not sure what other districts we have.
And I certainly don't want you to feel, feel pressured to answer questions. If it's something that you can, you know-
And I'm not trying to pressure him, I'm just trying to make sure we have a fair representation of every district on there. That's the reason why I was asking the questions. Okay.
So Richard Best is District Five, Judith McMillan, District One, Terry Cottle's District Two, Brett Snack, District Three, Linda Legal, District One, and then Donna Stevenson, District Five. But Linda Legal and Donna Stevenson will come off in a month, so they'll be, their term will end, completely end at December thirty-one. So that's District One, District Five. So you have representation from One, Two, Three, and Five.
And nobody from Six?
No, sir. And nobody from Four.
And I'm sorry, what, do you say nobody from Four?
Nobody from Four, Six, and the Historic District covers District One, Three, and Five.
And that's where I kind of lean towards ensuring that, you know, folks, especially if it's their only choice from One, Three, and Five, are given a little bit, a little bit of preference on that.
And just, just for council's information, I did ask that the Historic District provide recommendations. They were not able to do that at this time during their meeting. I guess they had some discussion, but no recommendations came forth. And the list that I gave you was really just based off of the applications that came in in which order.
But you said you do have one rotating off of Five, is that what you said within the month?
Yes, ma'am.
So that might be what you're looking at.
So my, my recommendation to council would be-
I have a question.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Since you called me up here. He said, or I'm sorry, she said that we didn't give a recommendation. We were instructed not to give a recommendation, that it was you, you people that made the decision. So that's, that was exactly how it was put across to us. So we made no recommendation.
All right, then let's table this back, because it is, we absolutely do normally get recommendations from the commission.
Well, I don't have any problem personally with the people we've got, and I know Johnny Peacock, I've known him for thirty years. He lives in Historic District, over on Locum, I believe.
That is, go ahead.
I say that, but they've got a big meeting coming up, so if they don't get a quorum, they're not gonna be able to do the business that they need to do in December. That's why we brought it now instead of waiting until the end of December.
So process-wise, can we by motion extend the terms of the current members-
Yes.
-one more meeting to allow them to conduct business and allow them to provide recommendations? Because again, that is the process of the commissions, is they generally bring forward their recommendations.
I don't think that's the issue. I think the issue is that there's three vacancies.
Right.
So if you have, out of the six people left on the board, they have to have enough for a quorum. So if they don't get a quorum for their December meeting, they won't be able to meet.
But can't we extend the current, I'll come right back to you, but can't we extend the term of the current members one more meeting by motion to allow them to still have the folks they have?
Well, they have the six people on there.
Right.
That's not a problem. But if those six people-
I got you.
We have, we don't have a quorum, then stuff they've advertised to have their meeting with, they're not gonna be able to meet.
I got you.
Do I have any more questions for me?
I don't.
No, we don't.
Okay.
Councilwoman Taylor, and then, and then Councilman Boya.
So my question is, I know that historically we do get recommendations from the commissions, but ultimately, I've seen the recommendations come up here, and we change those anyway and make that decision. So being that we're here and they need members, couldn't we just vote on it today?
We can. I was trying to be respectful of the process, which is something that we tend to be sticklers for. The ones that are presented are presenting, are presented kind of in the order that they are received, and the ones that are their first choice or only choice. That's how we arrived at Peacock, Archibald, Musgrave. My recommendation to council, since we did receive another one from District One after this was all published, that in deference to District One, ensuring they still have recommendation, then we go with Peacock, Archibald, DeLea, and then Musgrave's second choice is Parks and Rec, we'll get there when we get there next one. That's my, my recommendation to council. It's not a binding recommendation by any means.
I move that we accept that recommendation. That would be District Three, Five, and One.
One, one.
Yes, sir. I move that we accept that recommendation.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Peacock, Archibald, and DeLea to the Goldsboro Historic Commission. False, Mr. Second.
Sorry.
Well, no, I want to make sure that we get it right.
So this is going to change, the motion, amended resolution.
Does it have to change the motion, just that authorizing the other resolution of these three, making future draft, and then we'll sign that?
Right.
Authorizing the resolution?
Yes.
Amended resolution or something?
All right, so we, changing, who made the motion? Sorry, sorry.
I moved.
You moved, and then who seconded? And you seconded. Would it be okay if we changed the motion slightly to a motion to approve the mayor to sign an amended resolution to approve Peacock, Archibald, DeLea to the Goldsboro Historic District Commission?
Same.
All right. Questions been made and seconded. Madam Clerk, is that correct? Is there any further discussion? Yes, ma'am.
I think in good faith that we need to honor the applications as they came in. We have been putting it out, these individuals, putting their applications in. We have a lot of boards where not all of our districts are represented, and I don't think it's fair to not honor those individuals who have put their applications in and already expressed the interest of where they wanted to go. So I think we should keep it as presented by a clerk.
And there, there are going to be many, many vacancies coming up December thirty-one, so the people that are still on this list, we're gonna need those for positions on the end of December. In fact, just to make one more plea, we only have one position, we only have one applicant for Mayor's Committee for Persons with Disabilities at this time. We really need some people to step up at the end of December for that position, and also the student position on Parks and Rec.
All right, is there any further discussion? All right, hearing no, we'll call the vote.
So we had a motion and a second to accept the, your-
To accept Peacock representing District Three, Archibald representing District Five, and then DeLea representing District One.
And that's your recommendation?
That was my recommendation. The motion was made, was made on that. That's giving as many people as possible their, their first choice, and then also trying to be respectful of the three districts that are actually impacted by the Historic District Commission.
Okay. Ms. Matthews, was, did you make a motion?
No, I was just discussing that I think we should honor the clerk's recommendation based on the applications that came in in a timely manner.
That's good to do. We already did it now, but that, that's really good to do.
So a motion's been made and properly seconded. We've had discussion. It's now time to call a vote on that motion. If the motion fails, then we can obviously redo, or someone can make a motion to amend the motion, but I do need to process this motion that's in front of us. So with that, I'm going to call the vote, the votes, or the vote specifically is on the motion to approve Peacock, Archibald, and DeLea. All in favor, please raise your hands. All opposed, same sign. Seeing two, motion passes. And then, Councilman?
Go ahead.
Who's yours? A vote against? On a four-three vote, motion passes. All right. Next, council. I guess the cleanest thing to do here, Mr. Livingston, is you would please entertain any questions from the consent agenda, and if there are none, once we get to that point, we will break, or we will recess until our seven o'clock.
Do you want me to go over them, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. How I own the consent agenda items and any questions for the consent agenda?
So a couple of things on the operating budget amendments. We've had some donations come in, so in order to reflect those donations and add them back into our budget, there's a travel and tourism occupancy tax fund budget amendment. We also have one for a donation of around four thousand dollars for Parks and Recreation. We have donation of two unused computers to the town of Eureka, who I just got through saying they don't really have a lot of funds, and so we can help them out with those computers. We have a water main agreement between the City of Goldsboro and two farms. This was a property that's under contract for purchase with the City of Goldsboro to do a Royal Farms development right there on Grantham Street, a convenience store slash food market, and that money would come out of the sale of the, the property. Approval of council meeting calendar, also it's in there. If you've had a chance to look at that. And then the Historic District Commission appointments we just went through, and of course, the department monthly budget reports, or monthly reports, excuse me. course the department monthly budget reports, or monthly reports, excuse me.
Hey, just, just one question. I have one question there, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilman.
The donation of two unused computers, they're unused, are, are they, they're new? We don't need them? What, what's, what's to do with those, just out of curiosity?
I think they've been used and then we just wash the memory bank on them, so they're like, uh-
They're used?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we, we, yeah, we basically-
Okay. No doubt. All right. That's all I have.
Okay.
All right, council, any other comments or questions for consent agenda items? All right, hearing none, we will stand and recess until our seven o'clock session at, uh, council chambers.
Seven o'clock version of our November eighteenth meeting. We'll officially call this general meeting to order. As always, as our tradition, we'll begin with invocation and a pledge. Well, today will be led by our fire chaplain Archbishop Anthony Slater. If you would please.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, shall we pray? Our Father, we thank you. Thank you for this evening that we can come together with the meeting of the minds. We thank you for the council that we have voted in, God, that they are looking at our best interests. Give them wisdom. Give them sight. Bless this city as business is being done. Father, allow us to begin to go further and build and go further in all the things that please you. Protect us, even in this season. Let those eat that would normally not eat. Make a way out of no way. And we thank you in advance for all you're about to do. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you would, please conduct a roll call.
Mayor Gayler.
Present.
Councilwoman Jones.
Present.
Councilwoman Boyett.
Here.
Councilwoman Taylor.
Present.
Councilwoman Weeks.
Present.
Councilman White.
Present. All right. Majority being present and accounted for, we have a quorum, so we will proceed. We'll begin with approval of minutes. Item A, minutes of the work session and the regular meeting of November fourth are presented for consideration and approval.
So moved.
All right, Councilwoman, motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion's been made and properly seconded to approve the minutes of the work session and the regular meeting of November fourth. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your hands. All opposed? None. Motion passes. All right, next we'll go into presentations. Item B is a proclamation honoring the fortieth anniversary of our Wayne Opportunity Center. So the way the... Yes, ma'am.
Sixtieth anniversary.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yes. Don't cut him out of the twenty.
I didn't mean to. I assure you, when I read it, it was going to be correct. There's something else in front of me that's got a four on it and is messing with my brain. And Brad, if you're listening, I'm getting a lot of reverb, not feedback, just reverb, but I can work with it. But if you can fix it, that'd be great, too. All right, so we will begin. The way we will proceed is I will read the proclamation and then ask those representing the Wayne Opportunity Center to come forward. We'll hand the microphone to y'all, let you do introductions, identify yourselves. If you have any comments, we'll present the proclamation. We'll do pictures with our public information officer and anyone else that you have with you, and then we'll conclude. Okay? So with that, a proclamation honoring the sixtieth anniversary of Wayne Opportunity Center Incorporated. Whereas Wayne Opportunity Center Incorporated, formerly Wayne County Sheltered Workshop, was founded November thirtieth, nineteen sixty-four by a group of concerned citizens who saw the need to provide job training services to disabled members of Wayne County. The Board of Directors contacted the NC Division of Vocational Rehab Services to design programs according to state guidelines. And whereas originally located in the basement of Saint Stephen's Episcopal Church in September nineteen sixty-five, an acre of land and two buildings at seven, six oh seven West Mulberry Street were donated to the center. In nineteen sixty-six, an additional building was purchased. Renovations and additions were added over the years via grants and matching dollars. Whereas in nineteen seventy-four, the center added programming sponsored by the NC Division of Mental Health, Developmental Disabilities and Substance Abuse Services to provide long-term training to persons with developmental disabilities, and demand grew beyond the capacity of the outdated facility. And whereas in nineteen ninety-five, after extensive fundraising efforts, the center moved to six nineteen South George Street, offering twice the work area and the opportunity to provide expanded job opportunities. And whereas since nineteen ninety-seven, the center has maintained its national accreditation for its rehabilitation and job training programs for the Commission on Accreditation for Rehabilitation Facilities, also known as CARF, since nineteen ninety-two, over six hundred disabled consumers have left the center to become gainfully employed, becoming taxpayers instead of tax receivers. And whereas in two thousand and six, the center acquired the HOPE program from East Point MCO. And whereas the center serves more than ninety consumers in both of the ADVP and CAP programs, ADVP offers diverse job training as well as support services to help consumers become financially stable. And CAP offers one-on-one assistance to severely impaired consumers to participate in daily life activities and day program services. The combination of services makes Wayne Opportunity Center a viable component of both the human services and economic communities of Goldsboro and Wayne County. And whereas the main facility and administrative offices are located at six nineteen South George Street, hours of operation are Monday through Friday, eight AM to four PM. Now therefore be it resolved that the Goldsboro City Council does hereby proclaim its admiration and appreciation for Wayne Opportunity Center Incorporated and its sixty years of invaluable service to disabled members of our community. A witness whereof, I am here to set my hand and affix the seal of the city of Goldsboro this, the eighteenth day of November, two thousand and twenty-four. If representatives from Wayne Opportunity Center would come forward? We'll get there. I think I'll come on up here and just kind of crest it around that way. The camera that's right up there, you can see everybody. We'll get everyone here in the middle. Amy, I'll begin by giving this to you and let you introduce everyone with you. And if you have anything else to say, you're welcome to it.
Thank you. My name's Amy Hartley. I'm the executive director for Wayne Opportunity Center. With us tonight, we have our management team. We have Jeff Cornell, who is our board of directors. He's our chairman of the board and been that for ten, twelve, fifteen years now. Our management team includes Angela Goldsby, our finance manager, Tony Price, our production manager, and Anita Marable, our program manager. Carla Massengill is here, representing our coordinators, and Mr. Walker and Danny Walker. They are both here tonight, representing our parents and our consumers. And we appreciate all the city has done for us over the years, the support the city has given us, and we thank you for the proclamation. And we are having a party next Tuesday on this very thing, so.
If you would, make sure the clerk, if we're invited, maybe you wouldn't bring it up if we weren't, I don't think. But that would be kind of mean, wouldn't it? But if you would, make sure the clerk knows. She'll make sure that it's on councilmembers' calendars, and we would, of course, love to stop by at everyone's availability. So next, if you will, let's move forward however you want to stage your crowd. And put everyone behind you, however you want to do it. We'll get a picture that's to your liking, and then you can have that. There you go. You slide down and get in the middle.
We do. I mean, we can please. Hey, we still do that, yeah.
All right, next we'll proceed with a presentation, or, excuse me, a presentation for Small Business Saturday. And we'll follow the same format. Small Business Saturday Proclamation. Whereas the city of Goldsboro celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are thirty-three point two million small businesses in the United States. They represent ninety-nine percent of all firms with paid employees. Sixty-one point six million, or forty-five point nine percent of Americans, are employed by a small business. And whereas small businesses employ forty-seven point one percent of the employees in the private sector in the United States, eighty-eight percent of U.S. consumers feel a personal commitment to support small businesses in the wake of the pandemic. And ninety-two percent of small business owners have pivoted the way they do business to stay open during and after the pandemic. And whereas ninety-seven percent of Small Business Saturday shoppers recognize the impact they can make by shopping small, eighty-five percent of them also encourage friends and family to do so. And whereas fifty-nine percent of U.S. consumers aware of Small Business Saturday shopped or ate at a small, independently owned retailer or restaurant on Small Business Saturday in two thousand and twenty-three, and eighty-six percent shopped in-store, and more consumers, fifty-three percent, reported shopping online at small businesses than online at large retailers, only thirty-four percent on that particular day. And whereas Goldsboro, North Carolina supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore be it resolved that the Goldsboro City Council does hereby proclaim November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four as Small Business Saturday in the city of Goldsboro and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. A witness whereof, I am here to set my hand and affix the seal of the city of Goldsboro this, the eighteenth day of November, two thousand and twenty-four. For those representing Small Business Saturday, come forward. Then we'll let y'all introduce yourselves. So first I'll introduce Mr. Esteban Guzman, and then I'll introduce Ms. Kimber. Actually, Esteban, if you would, I'm going to hand the microphone to you if you would speak about what it is that you do, and then if you pass the microphone, and then we'll actually hand over the proclamations.
Good evening. My name is Esteban Guzman. I'm the director for the Small Business Center here at Wayne Community College. Here with me tonight is Kimber Roche, merchant chair, Grayson Hesse, board president, and Greg Mills, business property development specialist. And some of the members that prefer to take pictures of us. But I want him to remind you that we are in the best city to make business. We were talking about opportunities, and here in Goldsboro, it's the way or an opportunity is through business ownership. The city supports us fully to develop our businesses, develop our ideas, and also the state of North Carolina, through the Small Business Center network, supports planning, opening, and growing of businesses. And just to remind you, I'm there at the Small Business Center at Wayne Community Colleges. All of our services are completely free. Take advantage of it. We waiting for you. Let's make your idea real and take advantage of the opportunities that our city gives us and supports us to attain the American dream. Thank you. Good evening.
Kimber, do you have anything that you'd like to say? Perfect. And Grayson?
I think I'm all right.
Ladies and gentlemen, that is a rare occurrence. So with that, Kimber, I'll hand a copy to you. Esteban, I'll hand a copy to you. And then if it's okay, I'll slide right over here, and then we'll do the pictures. I need to be a little bit more formal and not poke at folks when doing a proclamation to honor them while also then poking at them for not having anything to say. So with that, we will move into our public comment period. Madam Clerk, if you would, please go down the list.
There is no one on the list.
All right, with that, we will close our public comment period. And we will move into our consent agenda items. Mr. Livingston, if you would, please present the consent agenda items for approval.
Thank you, Mayor. We have several handful of consent agenda items, mostly of budget amendments. I went through them earlier, so if there's any questions on any of them, I'd entertain them now.
Counsel, are there any questions about any of the items on the consent agenda? Or remaining questions about items on the consent agenda? Hearing none, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
So moved.
Motion's been made and properly seconded to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Madam Clerk, if you please conduct a roll call.
Mayor Gayler.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones.
Here.
Councilman Boyett. Councilwoman Taylor. Councilwoman Weeks.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
All present voting yes, consent agenda items are approved. Items D three J are approved. There are no items requiring individual action, so we'll move to our city manager's report. Mr. Livingston, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Don't have too much. We are talking with some retreat facilitators now to kind of help us through the retreat process and organizing that so that we can have time as a staff, meaning the management team, to engage more with you and help the facilitator kind of bring out what we need to bring out and the decisions that we need to start kind of thinking about and the plan of action we need to start charting for the city. So that's one thing we're doing right now.
Thank you, sir. And of course, the remainder, the elaborated version of your report is, of course, available to council by email. It's always a very in-depth report, and I appreciate you keeping us all apprised of the ongoings of the city. Next, we'll move to mayor and city council members' comments. Being the second meeting of the month, it is our tradition to begin with, represented from District Six, Councilman White. The floor is yours.
Yes, Mayor, I just have one thing. I'd just like to give a shout out to the brothers of Cap Apple Saff attorney Incorporated, who on this weekend cleaned up the road, New Hope Road, from Wayne Memorial Drive to Berkeley. So just a shout out to them.
I did witness them. They were out there. They were doing a good job.
And it looks, it does look amazing, so thank you. Councilwoman Weeks, floor is yours.
I only had one comment tonight, and it was in reference to a comment that Councilwoman Boyett made earlier in our work session when he asked our interim city manager, would he be placing, would he be placing a resume and submitting a resume and entering his name into the hat for the city manager's position? Your response was, "I just don't know." And I just want to look at you and publicly say that I, when I heard you make that response, I was discouraged, disappointed, and even grieved because I believe that sitting in that seat right there is a man that is extremely credentialed for our city. He is extremely talented, gifted, and it is unprecedented for all of your department heads to come before your council and say, "This is the man we want for our leader." He has heard us. He has supported us. He has loved us. He has encouraged us. And one of the department heads even made the statement, "We are a family." And so, Matt, I encourage you to apply for that position because you are gifted, you are anointed, you are called by God for such a time as this.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman, the floor is yours.
So I just want to thank Beverly for her comments. I, too, was discouraged when I found out that Matt was not, was maybe not going to apply. And I just wanted to publicly say that I do appreciate you and that I do think that you're doing a great job, but I just want to have that transparency and follow the process. So other than that, I don't have any comments.
Councilman, the floor is yours.
As always, I'd like to say thank you to all of our hard-working city employees and tell you, as I do each time, how much you're valued and appreciated and remind you that this city couldn't run without you. You're all appreciated. Just a couple of things from there. Just had the opportunity to attend the Rocket's Change of Command on base this week. That was a great event. Was glad to be able to attend that. Another thing that I have mentioned a couple of times regarding the League of Municipalities Legislative Policy Committee that I'm a part of, just wanted to say that that work has been wrapped up now. Last week, we got all that wrapped up, and it was great participation. There was a hundred and fifty cities, two hundred elected officials, and three hundred and fifty goals put forth that we got down to sixteen as an A priority and sixteen as a B priority. To whittle down to three fifty to sixteen. And now that that's done, our recommendations will go to the league board of directors, and they'll vote on that. And then at that point, then each municipality will be able to cast a vote for what their preferences are to push forward for advocating for our cities at the state level. So I just wanted to mention that that had been done. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman, the floor is yours.
Yes, I would like to thank the city employees so much for all that you do. We do appreciate you. I would like to thank Matt, Ron, and the council for just, sometimes we don't always agree, but it doesn't mean that we're not working together. And we do work together on many occasions, so I do want that said and made very clear. Also, the Continental Societies was celebrated in November as early childhood mental health awareness month. So let us work together to help our infants and our preschoolers learn valuable skills needed to be emotionally connected to their world. And we will be, the Continental Societies will be November twenty-third. Some of us will have a table out there, and we will have some goodies and some things for school and some healthy choices and some treats and resources for the parents so that we can help with mental health awareness.
Thank you, Councilwoman. So my comments, they're going to sound a little bit familiar, but then there's some other things that also, that I also want to say. And fortunately, we're, you know, well ahead of schedule, although I still don't think these are going to be all terribly long. So first off, to, to council, you know, we had another very big challenge in front of us today, and over the last few weeks, of deciding how we wanted to proceed regarding our, our city manager. I'm proud of this council for being able to have the maturity to strongly disagree, call each other, still disagreeing, get off the phone, be frustrated with each other, but still ultimately say, "We're going to, we're going to cast a vote, we're going to make a decision, and we're going to move forward. We're not going to kick the can down the road, we're going to be professional, we're going to do our jobs." And council, I appreciate that. I already said I would have loved to have gone a different direction, that's not the point, my point is, I'm, I'm proud of this council for being mature enough and stable enough and comfortable enough in its own skin to be able to call each other and try to have these conversations and try to lean on one another, but ultimately, we do what we have to do, democracy is what it is. We cast some votes, we made a decision, and we're moving forward. So, Mr. Livingston, you have, you have been a transformative interim manager for this city. I don't know what your future holds, I don't know what your desires are for what your future may be, I just simply want to say, this is not foreshadowing, this is nothing more than me acknowledging what has happened. You have been a transformative, and I think fantastic interim manager for this city. You accepted the helm of this ship at a moment where that you had just come out of a tumultuous election cycle, we had just gone through a very strenuous city manager evaluation process, decisions were made, and an offer to you to come in on interim basis and help get this ship heading in the right direction and stabilized, and you rose to the occasion. I just want to go on record of publicly saying that whatever the decision is that happened tonight, and whatever the decision is that comes next, you have done this with honor, and you have my utmost respect, even though, as I said before, you and I can go head-to-head on stuff, and I'm okay with that, because you're doing it, I believe you're trying to do it the right way. And as parts and examples of that, I really want to pull out a thing that was presented during the work session tonight, that was the final audit presentation. Our finances are the most stable they've been since pre-COVID. And that's in large part, you got to remember, he was here before he was the interim manager, he was an assistant city manager, and you know, the former city manager also did some really strong things trying to get the finances in place, but the person who keeps the ship heading in the right direction, making those course corrections deserves credit when something actually gets accomplished. And you and the team around you, Catherine, the staff in the finance department, get that credit. You absolutely hate it when I do this publicly, I get it, because you want people that are actually, you know, putting pen to paper every day to get the credit, and I agree with that, it's part of what makes you a good leader, but I'm going to do it anyway. You have to accept some of the credit, because you're the guy in the chair, so deal with it. Next, we got on another fun thing tonight, the Cycle NC discussion, because that went well 10 years ago, and because we are where we are now, we've made some adjustments, you know, trying to put impacts on, on crime in the city, we've tried to make, you know, other things go right, and we're not done, I'm not trying to say that things are peaches and cream, because they're not, but we've done some good things, we're, we remain on the list for these golf tournaments that pull kids from all over the world, for these bike, these bike tours that pull people from all over the state, that's going to be another really good event that we're going to celebrate in October. We're able to help out Fremont and kind of be the, the elephant in the room and say, "No, we're not willing to completely yield here, but we do know what we're doing. Fremont, we're going to help you help Eureka, we're going to try and get this whole water system mess figured out, but we're going to do it from a position of professionalism and knowing what we're talking about." We're in a position where that now, we're able to donate some unused equipment to help, you know, Eureka and some of our, our other neighbors. These things happen because of quality leadership and all throughout the organization, so again, I'm not foreshadowing, I'm not trying to blow smoke, and no one in this room is more uncomfortable right now than you. But I'm going to say it anyway, because you have to accept a piece of that credit, and I'm grateful for what you've done, I'm excited about this next step, I'm excited about the search, I'm excited about what comes next, I hope you're a factor in that search. If you choose not to, I don't blame you. If you choose not to, I hope you still choose to stay with the city, but if you don't, I don't blame you, but I'll be the first to write your letter of recommendation. But just know, I, I want you to be a part of this city and a part of this administration, that's, that's my humble opinion on it. So with that, I've gone over some of the, some of the good things that we have coming up, I'm happy with, with the direction and the things that we're doing, heavens knows, we've got a bunch of stuff we've got to clean up, I'm proud of the, of code enforcement over this last week, they've been responsive to calls, have been trying to go out there and work on some longstanding issues, I'm proud of the, the hire in our housing development, or the housing enforcement officer, I'm proud of the work those folks are doing, it's not always comfortable, but it is working, and it is going to make a difference. I'm proud of what our, what our planning department envisions to be, they're not there yet, I've been very public about that, probably more so than I should be, but I know they have a vision for what they want to be, and I believe that, that we can, that we can get there, but we got to get there quicker than we're doing it right now. All right, I don't want to go past 7:30, so.
There is one thing I would like to mention.
Yes, Mr. Livingston.
It's just, we had a really good, the department heads and I had a really good retreat with Seymour Johnson.
Would you talk a little bit more about that, because that's unprecedented and deserves to go on the record.
Well, again, I, I give the staff credit for putting it together and organizing it and making it happen, but I think it was good, because we were able to not just work with a Seymour Johnson leadership team, but work with ourselves and understand our own strengths and weaknesses, learn from each other, so we're going through our best management practices that we put together and sharing those experiences, and just, it was just good for us to kind of get away for just a few hours, and, and, and we definitely are going to be doing this annually, because it is something that we were able to, I guess, learn from each other and just, and, and have a little bit of a different atmosphere out there, so I did want to mention that.
Would it be appropriate if I go ahead and say thank you, Mr. Murphy, for the work that went in putting this?
So did Kelly, they both did.
Kelly Arnold, our interim assistant city manager, Buddha, who's the vice wing commander out on base, Jester, the, the wing commander on base, that's Losi in Bofferting, for those of you tracking at home, but leaning on the leadership development tools that we have right here in this city through that partner over on base is critical, and that's another example of, of a really, really positive thing that we're going to do to continue developing leadership in the city. All right, so with that, went one minute over my hope, but it's always standard